It's a brand new season of The Conversation, and I've got a brand new friend. Mr. Biggs Biggs the Purple Gorilla now has a demon inside of him. Hello, Mr. Biggs Biggs.
Hello, and welcome to The Conversation. We are back, and it is season 10 of The Conversation. And my back, I've got back pain of my joints. Whenever it rains, I get pains in my elbows. Getting old is what I'm saying. Uh, this is our 10th year. We haven't like actually hit the 10th anniversary because that will be at the beginning of next season. But uh, this is our 10th season. Uh, the numbering system of The Conversation is looking increasingly convoluted. So anyway, I'm excited about this season. I am triple vaxxed, I am waxed, and I'm ready to get down and dirty with an all-new year of Donkey Kong Universe discussion. And with me on this episode, I've got a whole group of people too. So Gibbon, Gibbon, you, you, you are a frequent Conversation co-host. Welcome, welcome back.
Hello.
Hello. Dustin, Dustin Jackson, hello, you're less frequent, but you might be more frequent this year, so.
Spoilers. Heil, I'm glad, I'm glad you're getting so old. Now you can uh, give us hints for only the first world.
You know.
You'd think they fixed that in any of the re-releases.
If you stick to the treetops Dustin, you might earn some extra lives, just, just a hunch, I don't know.
You need to, you need to tell me where you got waxed.
Uh, do it myself, I just pour, I just, I just light one of those Yankee candles and I.
Oh god. Oh no.
They call it the Heil method.
Makes me feel alive. No, I.
That's the sound you make when you rip it off. Heil.
So this season of The Conversation, aside from getting into my personal hygiene, will see us reexamine a few rare or rare adjacent games that we, in the past, have determined not to be a part of the Donkey Kong Universe for various reasons.
By we, he means him.
The royal we, alright, I mean DK Vine as an entity, whether that be me uh, or any of the past staffers who worked for us, but you know, when I say we, I mean me, alright, unless I mean we. Just keep up.
I like that you pretend to have us included.
There's a reason you two are on this episode, so just calm down, alright?
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah, you're already giving me shit and I invited you on here for a very diplomatic reason.
Get all the goofing out of the way first.
Okay, you can, mm, okay, calming down. You can continue.
So on this season premiere of The Conversation, the very vaunted double-digit season premiere, we're only gonna get the first double-digit season premiere once for The Conversation. Like, there won't be a season premiere that's this big of a deal until we hit season 100. So just give me a break. Uh, we're gonna be covering the game that probably comes up the most when the questions arise of what the Donkey Kong Universe is. Because this game, if I'm honest, it probably gets talked about more online these days in questions to us over why we don't consider DKU than it gets talked about at all. It's just, whatever Saber Wolf comes up in any online discourse, it's like, well, why doesn't DK Vine consider DKU? And um, yeah, so yeah, I kinda buried the lead there. The seventh Game Boy Advance game uh, from Rare's handheld team. Uh, the seventh being the um, the, the other six have long been DKU. This is the seventh. It is the fourth published by THQ, and as I said, the only one we've never classified as DKU. I, of course, if you hadn't figured it out by now, because I already said it, I'm talking about Saber Wolf for the Game Boy Advance. Saber Wolf, not.
Oh shit, I played the wrong game.
Yeah, you played Saber Wolf.
I thought we were talking about Mickey's Racing Adventure.
Gibbon played Saber Wolf for the Spectrum, and yet Dustin was just completely in a different realm.
It's rare, it's portable, I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
So we do have a call, uh, and, and this call, I think, will just help set the tone for the episode. Doesn't really get into the areas we're going to explore, but it does kind of set, I think, the, the right headspace when discussing the game Saber Wolf. So let's go ahead and play the call, and then we'll really get this insanity underway. This is gonna be some inane shit. Gibbon's gonna throttle me at least once in this episode. And that's why I invited Dustin, just, just to kind of get between us, cause, cause Gibbon's gonna be like, I've been saying this for years, alright. Uh, first call, only call, let's play it.
Hey guys, Carson here, and I just wanted to call in because I hear you guys are talking about Saber Wolf for the GBA. Really excited to see you guys finally do an episode on it. Cause I've been playing it a lot recently, and now it's probably one of my favorite rare games ever. It's just extremely solid, an extremely solid platformer with great interesting mechanics and some really dastardly levels towards the end. Wanted to call because I've been thinking about this game recently, and I guess Saber Wolf and It's Mr. Pants and all the GBA games kinda represent a special moment in time for Rare. Because that was the last, you know, time they were able to create games in small discreet teams without a whole lot of oversight and pressure to deliver. I mean, a small Game Boy Advance game like Saber Wolf didn't have the same kind of pressure and the amount of stakeholders as a Perfect Art Zero or a Cameo. And there's just something very intimate about those handheld games that I feel has kind of been lost in recent time. And for Rare specifically, that was, you know, that was when the handheld team was still around before it was shut down in 2008 after Pocket Paradise. And then subsequently, pretty much all of the teams were disbanded and placed into one giant team to work on Kinect games for a while. So it's this really special moment in time, I think. Whenever I've played the game, it almost feels like talking to some friends over a campfire. That's the way I picture it anyway. I guess if I had any question, it would be, what are some of your favorite memories of games of that era? When things were a bit more intimate and felt a bit more personal, I guess. Anyway, thanks for listening to me ramble, guys, catch you later.
Hey, thanks for the call, Carson, and you know, I, I would just agree with you. Uh, Rare's handheld games from this era, uh, you know, I mentioned they had seven for the Game Boy Advance, but there, you know, there's some for the Game Boy Color that preceded this, and then a pair for the Nintendo DS at the end. And I, I love the handheld team, you know.
Yeah.
I, I think, like, pound for pound, they might have been the most consistent team of this era. You know, all the attention usually goes to like the Banjo team, which is just like the rough descriptor for Greg Mails and Chris Sutherland and, and you know, their whole group. Um, and you know, then you've got like the Conquer team, you've got the Diddy Kong Racing team. And you know, you can define these teams however you want, whichever game they're most known for, but. Uh, the handheld team is, I think, the unsung hero, especially this era, where they were just delivering some fun, as you said intimate, I think that's a good descriptor, because that's the way I feel when I play these. There, it, it almost feels like, you know, we, we, we live in an age where we get to kind of interact with the creators of all these games on social media and whatnot. And it felt like there was almost a dialogue then between them and us playing these games. Like there was, there were in-jokes, there were references, there were things that like were, were paid off and paid tribute to that wasn't happening on the console games necessarily. And I, I love a lot of Rare's output for the, uh, the Xbox and the 360 obviously, and, and Xbox One of course, but I think that, you know, the, the handheld team, they are underappreciated, and something I've always strived to do at DK Vine is to give credit to these games, you know, you can say like, oh, I didn't care for Banjo Pilot, but It's Mr. Pants is one of, like, is my favorite puzzle game of all time, and I think just one of the best, most quirkiest titles on the GBA. Grunty's Revenge is an indispensable part of Banjo Kazooie.
For sure.
Yeah, and yep, Saber Wolf, it's a game I haven't talked about much because I got it when it came out. Um, I got the one copy that my local GameStop got, but um, I didn't, I didn't play it as much as I should have. And I have been playing it quite a bit more the past month or so. And yeah, you're absolutely right, it's a stellar, phenomenal title. And I, I, it's not like revolutionary or anything, but it's got a lot of clever ideas and just the presentation is just, it's like being hugged by an old friend that you haven't seen for years. You know, um.
His big mitten hands.
I, I know we're, we're not getting into like the actual nitty-gritty of the game a whole lot in this episode, but yeah, like I, I played it uh, like through to completion back when it came out. But um, I, I think I was a bit hmm, put off that it wasn't, like it wasn't laid out like Grunty's Revenge, and it wasn't laid out like Donkey Kong Country, it was this weird hybrid and the levels weren't quite the same, and the art was a little off. And I was, I had expectations with a capital E um, that weren't being fulfilled and maybe colored my opinion of it a little bit. Like still loved the, the, the presentation of it all, but, but was, was left a bit wanting. But coming back to it uh, in the lead-up to this episode and playing through it again, it's like, holy crap, this is amazing. This is such a great game.
I didn't realize this game was good.
Yeah, I, it's, it's just so, I think also finely tuned for a lot of the aesthetics and sensibilities that a lot of us at DK Vine appreciate. There, there's a lot of what I would call Donkey Kong DNA. It, cause it, cause it trades heavily in like tropes, old adventure tropes. And you know, it's like um, the, the, the kind of stuff that Donkey Kong Country would heavily draw from to create, you know, that series, you, you also see him play in Saber Wolf. And you know, I, I'm kind of mad at younger me circa 2004 for not playing through this. It's like, well, it's not DKU, I don't really need to invest a lot of time and energy in it, you know. You know, I, I was busy even then, I was in college and um, writing for North Texas Television and you know, a lot was going on, so I didn't really feel like I had time to even then play a lot of video games that weren't directly related to my passion, even though this was, it was a rare game and I adore Rare, but I played it, I just never finished it because life got in the way. And now I'm playing it and really sinking my teeth into it, and I'm like, damn, damn, I was a fool.
We were all fools.
So yeah, Carson, thanks for the call, and, and I think like all of us on the staff here at DK Vine, we absolutely adore these handheld games, because it was, it was kind of like Rare's indie band at the time. You know, they, they were innovating and coming up with stuff that um, wasn't getting a lot of scrutiny because there were lower stakes, and it was kind of like the last time Rare could make games the way they had always made them up until that point, before you know, the industry really rapidly changed around them. And um, you know, you see a lot of, I think, through line between Saber Wolf and Ukulele and the Impossible Layer over Platonic. Um, so you know, there, there is kind of a correlation there, but this won't really be a discussion of Saber Wolf GBA, that might come.
Yeah, yeah.
That might come relatively soon, but uh, we're not gonna be getting into the ins and outs of the game. Like this is the story, this is where we think it takes place on the timeline. Now, this will be more of an examination of its strange relationship to the Donkey Kong Universe. And that's why I know I've invited both Gibbon and Dustin, because as have I, they have played Saber Wolf GBA recently, and they've both long, long been proponents of it being included in our shared universe construct known as the DKU. Gibbon, you and Milo of DK Gerder, I know you've long advocated for it, the both of you. And Dustin, you've been more quiet and polite about it, but I know it's been a long simmering rage for you.
I, I was tugging on your, on your collar saying, please Heil, please make Saber Wolf DKU.
Well, I, 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 I know there is this assumption that I just deem games, okay, I think this should be DKU, and I think that should be DKU. But there's a logic behind it that kind of, it goes beyond me. I mean, I, I helped devise the logic, but it, it's, it's like um, it's not something I just arbitrarily say, I really want Ukulele to be DKU, you know? So I say it's DKU, there, there's a reason behind everything. So to really understand this, and to really get to where we need to be and where the audience listening to this needs to be, before we can get into whether or not we made the wrong call on Saber Wolf, is we need a brief explanation of the Donkey Kong Universe. Put a pot of coffee on, let the tea steep, you're gonna be here for a while. Uh, no, I mean, a good explanation, as any, can be found on DK Vine under What Is The DKU? It was an excellent summary written by Matt Korna and Jeff Onan on our staff. And you know, they really get into it in ways that I can't do justice on this podcast. But the easiest explanation is that the DKU is more of a loose, shared, rare universe that's been firmed up as a thing over the years, but is now split between two or three corporate entities, depending on your view, if Platonic is granted legitimate word of God status, which we hear DK Vine says, yes, uh, but your opinions may vary. And shared universes in the 1990s, when the DKU was born and when DK Vine was founded, they're kind of different from how the popular imagination views shared universes in the culture today. Because while comic book shared universes existed back then, it wasn't really a thing in major media, or at least it wasn't a recognized thing. You know, we had Universal Monsters, one of the earliest shared universes. Um, we, we had like Western animation universes like Looney Tunes, Hanna-Barbera, et cetera. We had like The Muppets and all of their various properties, like Sesame Street, Fraggle Rock. But you know, even that was kind of related uh, to fringe fan cultures and the stuff for, of kids, you know, children's play. It, it wasn't really viewed in any serious context by the elite tastemakers of media. You know, um. No, I mean, it, it depends how you view things, but.
Well, you, you did have some more adult-oriented shared universes, like the Alien and Predator stuff that started up by then.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but even then, like, it, it was more um, geek culture. And it still is geek culture, but geek culture wasn't mainstream at that point, you know?
Yes, very fair.
You know, talking about shared universes, I know like Doctor Who would get some one-shot spinoffs in the seventies and eighties, but nothing like it did when it was revived in the, uh, the mid 2000s.
Yeah, nothing took off, they tried to spin a lot of things out of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Star Trek and Star Wars, they have shared universes, but they're usually all singularly branded as Star Trek or Star Wars, so there's no real confusion of, of brand there.
Hmm, there were some other Roddenberry series that you could argue are connected, but like there was nothing concrete there.
Yeah, yeah, so for me, the easiest reference point for the masses when uh, the, the DKU concept was percolating in my brain, were American sitcoms. Because this is where I, as a kid, I think I was really introduced to the concept of shared universes. Um, in the seventies, you had Happy Days and the Norman Lear universe. Uh, they, they were two of the biggest shared universe ecosystems of that decade. And then in the eighties and early nineties, you had the ABC sitcom Perfect Strangers, which begat Family Matters. Uh, yeah, a lot of people don't realize that Family Matters, the show with Urkel, actually is a spinoff of Perfect Strangers. But they had Cheers, of course, Cheers spun off the oft-forgotten series The Tortellis, and then a much more successful spinoff that's maybe even more known than Cheers today, Frasier. And you know, with uh, with Perfect Strangers and Family Matters, Family Matters of course had the character of Urkel, who then crossed over in all sorts of TGIF family sitcoms of that era. Uh, Urkel is a Perfect Strangers universe character, and thus the episodes of Full House and Step by Step that he appeared in are part of the Perfect Strangers universe. However, there's a problem with that, and that's Full House was acknowledged as a fictional TV show on the show Step by Step. And when Urkel appeared on both. And, and, and you know, these shows weren't meta, like Rare's games tend to be. Like there is no breaking of the fourth wall here, it wasn't like, haha, look at us being mischievous. So there is a problem if you, if you say all three entities, uh, Family Matters, Full House, and Step by Step, if they exist in the same shared universe, well, Step by Step and Full House are, are constantly butting heads with that concept, even though Urkel appeared as Urkel in all, in both. So those one-off crossovers, as I figured as a child, were canon to Perfect Strangers and Family Matters, but not vice versa. You see what I'm saying? So most of, most of these shared universes weren't created with the intention of having a sprawling media empire like everybody yearns for today. Like every studio wants a big shared universe today, but in the early nineties, nobody was thinking in these terms. They, they were just taking characters that proved popular, giving them their own shows maybe, and that accounted for the sloppy disregard of the links between the parent and the spinoff as time went on. For example, the actor who played Larry Appleton in Perfect Strangers, one of the main leads of Perfect Strangers, would appear in the last season of Perfect Strangers spinoff Family Matters as a completely different character. Like, like.
That's just soap opera stuff though.
That's, that's, that's just like such a slap in the face to the hardcore Perfect Strangers fans, buddy, like.
Uh, as a, as a hardcore Dark Shadows fan, you all a bunch of amateurs.
So you know, in the early nineties, like leading up to 1994, when Donkey Kong Country came out, this is how I was kind of exposed to shared universes and how my brain was trying to wrap my head around them. I was like, well, this, this is weird because, you know, Urkel's appearing in all of these shows, but these two shows that Urkel's appeared in, they don't exist in the same universe. So these singular episodes that Urkel appears in, they must be canon to Urkel, but not canon to each other in the, in the context of their own series. So yeah, um, so you can kind of see where some of the grains of the DKU and DK Vine's character-first notions came from. Because the Donkey Kong Universe wasn't originally intended to be a shared universe. And that's why, you know, auteurs, auteur game creators from Rare, like Greg Mails or Chris Seaver, disavow Banjo existing in the same world as Donkey Kong or Conquer existing in the same world as Banjo. You know, when they were creating Banjo Kazooie and Conquer's Quest slash 12 Tales Conquer 64 slash Conquer's Bad Fur Day, they weren't thinking in these terms. Like, oh, this is gonna be such a great entry of the DKU. They weren't, um, so this has kind of resulted in a lot of what I, I, I call radical Banjo Kazooie separatist, um, who have kind of sprung up over, over the last uh, couple of years.
Okay, I know what those sorts of people you're talking about.
The ones who scoff at the notion of the DKU. Uh, they, they say that, you know, Banjo doesn't exist in the same world as Donkey Kong because Greg Mails said they don't. Um, that's all well and good if that's Greg Mails' opinion. And of course, I adore Greg Mails, I, I, my favorite game designer of all time, I adore Chris Seaver. And that is their opinion and I respect that. However, uh, but word of God only gets you so far. Because.
Yeah, yeah, we're a very Nietzsche-oriented, God is dead, get out of here sort of philosophy at times.
Yeah, take a drink, everybody, that's your first Nietzsche reference of the season.
I didn't realize this was a game.
That's gonna be the game of the season.
We gotta keep it going now.
Yeah, if you find all the references.
Count the number of, ah, damn it, I forgot to say that, fuck.
By the way, nobody's found the missing episode of The Conversation of season six yet.
It'll happen one of these days.
Final location.
I'm cleverly building up a fake Catfish account so I can win the prize and free you of this curse.
Beat Gibbon, and Gibbon's dastardly plan, and you will win an autographed copy of Sea of Thieves number one, starring the, uh, the two characters from Sea of Thieves, the arena, via collector's item, so. Uh, so anyway, the reason Greg Mails and Chris Seaver are wrong, they're, they're entitled to their opinion as, when they created Banjo Kazooie and Conquer, or helped create them, they, they weren't thinking this is gonna slot right into Donkey Kong's world. But when Rare decided to use Diddy Kong Racing as a backdoor pilot for both, different corners of the studio loosely committed to this idea. Mostly at the time, Lee Loveday, and then later wordsmiths for Rare, like Chris Alcock. Uh, it, it was clear that others in the studio were sort of enamored with the idea and ran with it when they could with their games, such as the handheld team. The handheld team did a lot of heavy lifting in the aughts. Um, and it's clear that, you know, Platonic embraces a shared universe from the get-go when, when they were founded, like when we had Chris Sutherland on The Conversation for that interview we did back in season three, you know, that was one thing he said, it's like, yeah, we're gonna have a shared universe, like all of our games are gonna be connected, we are gonna introduce characters that we hope to later spin off. Um, like Platonic was with, with this mentality uh, from their very founding. And it's clear that a lot of minds there dig it, and you know, they, they even kind of covertly support Platonic being, you know, part of the shared universe that we call the DKU, like Steve Mails was the one who really fought to get the goldfish in Ukulele, and now we've got like Daily at Platonic, who, who has also had some fun with it. And of course, you know, there's also the kind of the dog chasing its own tail here because since DK Vine's presence in the fandom for over 20 years, um, has resulted in numerous letters to scribes and then, you know, interviews on The Conversation, meeting the creators, interacting with them on social media, that, that surely kind of put the thumb on the scales a bit.
And members of the community now actually working for these places and being part of the game creation process.
So you know, that, that's kind of how the DKU concept that originated with Diddy Kong Racing, when Diddy Kong Racing ended up introducing Banjo and Conquer, and they were kind of recontextualized in relation to Diddy's world at the time. Um, that, that's how the spirit has kind of kept alive, and this concept refuses to die, even though it's, it's been going on 20 years now where Donkey Kong uh, doesn't really have a role at Rare. You know, it's, you know, Donkey Kong is with Nintendo, and Rare's doing their thing with Xbox, and, and now we have Platonic as sort of the third brand. And yet this refuses to die, this notion, this idea, it's too good of an idea to let lay fallow, and.
I think one thing that helps is, is when Rare originally moved to Microsoft, the concept of a franchise spanning multiple publishers was still kind of novel. Um, in fact, I can only really think of two other examples, those being. Those being the, uh, Zeno series of JRPGs that is now a tent pole franchise at Nintendo, but started at Square and then moved to Namco before, uh, coming home to the, the Nintendo systems. And then the, um, the tactical RPGs from Matsuno that comprised like the Ogre Battle Games and the Final Fantasy Tactics series and stuff. Which, which went from Quest to Square and then Square bought Quest and resolved that issue. But Matsuno left Square and started making some for other companies. And, but yeah, a lot of people seem to have trouble with that concept of like, no, these are different publishers. How can they be connected, bruh?
That almost sounded like Donkey Kong, does that? Yeah, you know, and th- this whole idea of like, the DKU concept being something that we as a community have banged on the drums for, for all this time. I have to wonder if we would have had the Banjo Kazooie Smash trailer that we did without the fandom being as persistent about this.
Such a good trailer.
I know, and it was just such an obvious like nod to all of this. And of course, you know, then people who, who argue against this will just move the goalposts as they always do, but, um-
It's never enough.
Anyway, uh, so because the Donkey Kong universe was born out of the forges of the pre Marvel Cinematic Universe concept of shared universes in popular culture, is split between corporate entities and indeed is both recognized and unrecognized as a shared universe by the creators at the studios. The duty of defining what it exactly is sort of falls on us. You know, it's, it's not so clear cut at all times. And it is something that we, and I'm saying we, I assume you two, definitely me, but you know, it's something we take very seriously. You know, it's not just every Rare game.
I, I take it seriously, but I, I go about it a much different way than you do.
I think about it every day.
Good, good, good Dustin, good. Here's, here's a cracker.
My parents are sick of hearing it whenever I visit.
You know, it, it's not just every Rare game, even though it is a rare shared universe. It, it has to be born out of character appearances, ala Urkel. And it's something that can, something can only be natively DKU if it actually spun out of an existing property. Banjo Kazooie is natively DKU because by the nature of the release schedule and the way they reworked it, it became a Diddy Kong Racing spinoff. Conquer is natively DKU because it's a Diddy Kong Racing spinoff. It's Mr. Pants is natively DKU because it's a Banjo Toey spinoff, sort of. And so on, and so on.
I have issues with your Mr. Pants reading. I, I agree that Mr. Pants is DKU, but I disagree on the reasoning.
Now's not the time, Gibbon. Read the room, alright, there, we'll, we'll have, we'll have the great Gibbon Hile. Mr. Pants in Jet Force Gemini counts as an official appearance of It's Mr. Pants. We'll have that debate before season one hundred, I promise you.
Okay.
Alright.
I'm still waiting.
Well, yeah, you'll be waiting at least ninety seasons, alright?
Yeah, but the way we're going, that could be like tomorrow.
Time's moving so fast these days.
So, you know, I, I think these rules are simple. It, it is the rules that kept Step by Step from being a Perfect Strangers universe property, except for that one episode. Uh, but we have to amend and clarify things over the years. Because the future becomes the present and new scenarios and circumstances sort of, uh, crop up that we would have never anticipated, that never even happened to Steve Urkel. The Waluigi rule was the only true amendment we've ever added to the concept of the DKU. Because we never addressed at the site's founding a fundamental possibility of cameo games. When characters from the DK, the DKU cross over into other franchises, um, like the modern Donkey Kong crossing over in, with Mario Kart sixty-four. And what if that game introduces a brand new character? Would that character then be DKU? Even if it's someone completely unrelated to the core shared Rare universe? Someone like Waluigi?
Ah, there he is.
Yeah, um, so let me bring it back to Urkel one more time. I know you're all sick of hearing about Urkel, but I, I think Urkel is fundamental to understanding the Donkey Kong universe. An example of this for Urkel would be the aforementioned episode of Full House that he appears in. Urkel is the element that makes that specific episode of Full House part of the Perfect Strangers universe. But what about the new character introduced in it? DJ Tanner's friend Julie was never mentioned or seen before this episode, but was introduced in Stephanie Gets Framed to serve as the cousin of Steve Urkel and smuggle him into Full House. It's like, what's Urkel doing in the Tanner's living room? Oh, DJ is friends with his cousin Julie that we're just going to invent out of thin air. Julie never appeared in an episode of Full House again. I checked. I, I, I did thorough research on this and-
She served her purpose.
She never appeared again. But the question is, would her continued involvement hypothetically make an episode of Full House part of the Perfect Strangers universe? Even if her familiar relationship to Urkel was never addressed again? So that's what we had to sort out at DKVine, uh, around the early aughts. When characters such as Waluigi and Todette, who both debuted in Mario games with Donkey Kong characters appearing in it. Like, wh- what would we do with them? Like, would Todette be the next Banjo? Would Todette be the next Conquer?
The breakout star.
We ultimately sided on the notion of cameo games being an intertwined branch from a completely different tree. So you have the DKU tree, you have the Mario universe tree, sometimes those branches get tangled up. But the events happened canonically to the Kongs and they're shared canon. But the characters introduced are Mario characters and can't further influence the tree that is the DKU. And this also somehow saved us from Fire Emblem being DKU by way of Roy making his Western debut in Melee.
A complete coincidence, this concept of, of defining which, uh, parent franchise a character belongs to is, is one of the core tenants of Super Smash Brothers. Lots of debates over, over whose little franchise sticker is assigned to which character over the years, because, uh, some people, that's, that's changed over the years. Like, uh, Pauline was grouped with the Donkey Kong characters in one Smash, but she was grouped with the Mario characters in the next Smash. Because her context had shifted.
Ah, yeah, I, I have theories about that, but-
Which, uh, may come up later in the episode.
Yeah.
Spicy.
So, you know, some of us, had trouble with this at the time, i.e. me. See, cause, cause most took it as altering, you know, the DKU rules to fit our purposes. Yeah, it, it was ultimately the right call, um, because, like, I, I remember saying, I don't know how I feel about this, because it doesn't feel intellectually honest. Like, if we have these rules, we should just stick by them and just see where it takes us. But, um, then ultimately I was like, no, you know, what does Mario Dance Dance Revolution have to do with the DKU? What, what does Fire Emblem, the first Fire Emblem game released in the West, have to do with the DKU? We're, we're getting really far from the spirit of this. And, you know, it, it clarified something that I hadn't foreseen when unspooling the logic of the DKU back in nineteen ninety-nine, based on these ideas that first started percolating in the early nineties. And I bring all this up because it may be time for another new amendment to the DKU. We have the Waluigi rule. Maybe it's time for the Saberman rule.
Man, Kyle, over the last couple of weeks, believe it or not, I've had to explain the Waluigi rule to like two different people. Now you're telling me I gotta, I gotta explain to him the Saberman rule?
You, you, you- Somehow, somehow you had the right to your local congressperson?
Yeah, I don't actually think it's that complex. I think it's pretty straightforward. It's like-
Yeah, it makes sense.
This, this person did not originate in a parent franchise game. Therefore, they don't have like authority of conference, so, yeah.
Again, Rare isn't doing this for us, and they can't do it for us, because they can't claim authority over Donkey Kong. So it's not like, you know, Lee Loveday or Chris Alcock is handing this down to us.
The, the fact that, that devs of these multi, uh, multi, uh, publisher franchises can't come out and say, well, yeah, of course they're connected for legal reasons. It's just such a headache. I was, I was talking about one of these other franchises on Twitter, uh, the other day, and I just got so many comments to the tune of like, yeah, this is nice theory crafting, but you know, these are different publishers, right? And I'm just like, no, that doesn't matter.
Yeah, luckily we have a little bit of leeway here because of the shared history between Donkey Kong and Rare and Diddy Kong Racing and the Wayos all the stuff. We could, we can, like, most people haven't read the Diddy Kong Racing instruction manual in the year twenty twenty-two. You bust that out and it shuts up a lot of arguments, you know, but not always. So let's get into why Saber Wolf for the Game Boy Advance was never classified as DKU back in the day. So outside of Diddy Kong Racing, no other game has been the source for so many divergent DKU branches as Banjo Toey. Banjo Toey gave a name and a personality to Banjo's pet goldfish Royston, which, oh, brother, set up, set him up to appear in numerous games from two thousand and three to this very day. Games where he was the deciding factor in making something DKU, and it became a running joke. This was one of the first times where I think we, the fanbase, were really influencing some of the stuff in these games. Cause I know we had a role in getting Royston in things like Connect Sports Season Two and, um, Viva Pinata, which was a retcon, but one that Rare embraced and-
Yeah, he's, he's truly the, uh, John Munch of the, uh, the DKU.
Yes, another shared uni- great ninety shared universe reference there, Gibbon. Detective Munch from Homicide: Life in the Streets, who later became a Law and Order SVU character and has appeared in several dozen other shows in one-off crossovers and cameos. Shows, you know, like Sesame Street and Arrested Development. So, you know, he, John Munch is probably a sturdier reference than even Urkel when, when, um, trying to relate the DKU to other properties. But, um, you know, we got Royston, um, Plug Your Ears, Gibbon. We had the first real appearance of Mr. Pants as an actual character and not as an Easter egg or skin. And which of course gave way to It's Mr. Pants. And Banjo Toey also reintroduced the character of Saberman, the star of several ultimate play the game titles on the Spectrum in the nineteen eighties. Saberman is an original Rare protagonist from before they were even Rare. And unlike Mr. Pants or Royston, Saberman was being reintroduced in Toey specifically to set him up for future games and appearances. It was the Diddy Kong Racing method being utilized in a Greg Mails-designed game. And it's maybe the purest example of shared universe world building in a core DKU title. And yet, we've always said that Saber Wolf GBA, the game that ultimately resulted from this, wasn't DKU. Which seems so counter to our philosophy, to our psychosis. So what the hell, DKVine? What the fucking hell is wrong with us? Like, the one huge shared universe world building piece in these games, and we're saying, eh, not good enough. What the hell?
I think he's, he's possibly quoting word for word one of the numerous forum topics about that.
Oh, you know, I don't reply to all forum topics, but I see them. I'm like Santa Claus, I see-
I was about to say.
I see when you're nice. So the rationale at the time was simple and straightforward, or at least seemed simple and straightforward for the year two thousand. Saberman was a pre-existing character that predated the DKU. He was crossing over like, uh, like later characters would in the DKU. Like Bubbles from Clu- 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 Clu Land, she appeared in DK King of Swing. Uh, Mr. Game and Watch would cross over in Donkey Kong Country Returns. Uh, Shovel Knight has appeared in Ukulele and, you know, every other thing. From this, from the Saber Wolf fans' perspective, Banjo Toey was a cameo game to them. And because of that, we determined that Saberman himself couldn't make a game DKU. I, I, it was my hope that, yeah, Saber Wolf GBA would be DKU by virtue of another character appearance. And of course, Saberman Stampede, the game that Donkey Kong Racing ultimately became when they moved over to Xbox. Um, that, that game we had high hopes for ultimately never materialized.
Still have high hopes for, it's gonna happen.
It's gotta come someday.
I know E3 is probably not happening this year, but-
This was gonna be the year they announced it at.
Yeah, I know.
Sorry, this was gonna be the year, but-
Foiled again. So, a, a good sitcom, American sitcom example of this phenomenon would be when George Jefferson from Off of the Jeffersons, part of the Norman Lear universe, appeared on The Fresh Prince of Bel-Air. George Jefferson wasn't retroactively made a Fresh Prince character, right? Because according to shared universe language of the early nineteen nineties, Saberman couldn't be DKU. And I've always said that it actually pains me, it physically hurt that Saber Wolf GBA couldn't be part of the DKU. Because it's the only game from this team that I adore, that all of us at DKVine adore, that isn't. It, it's like the hole in things, right? Just like the missing piece of the puzzle, the missing piece of the amulet.
I feel, I feel like if, if maybe, maybe, you know, a grain of sand had fallen in an opposite direction, we might've ended up with some sort of like Rare Cow Rule or Enemy Mook Rule or something that would have allowed us to say that Saber Wolf was, uh, DKU uh, or something at the time. But like, like me and Hile and, and many others, a lot of us just played the game. Was like, well, that was nice, but wasn't what we were expecting and, and put it down and didn't look at it again for a decade or two.
Gibbon, what, what you're describing is the premise for the upcoming DKVine animated series, DKVine What If?
Oh, I can't wait.
It's not gonna be that great.
What if Hile started a Pokemon fan site?
What if we actually paid Dustin to animate that?
What if I had more patrons? Anyway, you know, it, it's, it's a game that so obviously feels part of the DKU. And I even felt that when I was playing it back in two thousand and four, thematically and environmentally, you know?
Mm-hmm, that's, that's always been one of my big contentions on a few key titles that the site has not classically considered DKU. It's, it's one of those, it's, it's, there's, there's a thing in some, uh, courts of law that, uh, the, the rationale behind some things is like, you can, you can, you'll recognize it when you see it. Uh, usually referred to as the porn rule, because you're, when you're determining if something is porn, it's like, if you look at it, you'll be able to tell. Uh, and this was one of those like, look at it, it's obviously DKU. What's wrong with you?
Well-
Sort of thing.
Yeah, and granted, I wasn't the only staffer at the time who made this call. Yeah, I think it was unanimous, but, and I'm not trying to like pawn off the blame to people who aren't on, you know, staff anymore, that's not fair. But, um, you know, it was even set up by Banjo Toey. Now, granted, you know, Saberman in his dreams is talking about riding a dolphin, so it was setting up a GameCube game that never materialized. But, you know, Saberman's return happened in Banjo Toey. And I've always just put my foot down on this because my rationale has been, yeah, it hurts that Saber Wolf GBA isn't part of the DK, or we don't classify it as part of the DKU. Cause I even acknowledge, it's, it's part of the universe. It, it's like, it exists- Cause I even acknowledged it's it's part of the universe. It it's like, it exists in this shared universe. We just cannot classify it as DKU because of the rules. And I don't know, it it, I I put my foot down on this and it's like, we don't get to choose which games are DKU. The DKU chooses for itself. And as it grows and evolves as a concept, our only role is to help track it. Uh, and you know, in the latter days, it was maybe campaign for future games to have characters to appear in it, which is how we got that goldfish in Ukulele who for legal reasons will remain unnamed. But we all know the intention. Wink, 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 wink. So all that being said, the the painful decision to say Saber Wolf GBA isn't part of the DKU. What's changed? Why are we doing this episode? And this is the first of several episodes we're doing this season, games that I feel like it's time to revisit. But I wouldn't be revisiting these games if I didn't feel like there was a good case to be made for any of them. And the cases are going to be different on a case by case basis. So it isn't, it isn't just, oh gee, I I really wish this handful of rare or rare adjacent games were part of the DKU. Let's find a reason. Let's dig in our asses and pull one out. That's not what we're doing here. There has to be an impetus, right? There has to be a long simmering or rapidly boiling reason why we are reexamining this. And I think that came to me over the holiday season. And thi- this is where we're gonna be getting into shared universes in the year 2022. The Marvel Cinematic Universe and Missing the Obvious some 18 years ago.
Okay.
All right. So buckle up, everyone. We're done talking about Urkel. Give yourself a round of applause. You made it through the Urkel portion of the conversation. Yay.
Kyle's Urkel privileges have been cut off.
Just uh RIP Bob Saget. I feel like before we move on from that frame of reference, we need to pay our respects to Bob Saget.
Yeah.
Who was uh indispensable in the creation of DK Vine. We couldn't have done it without you, Bob.
It really is. He is the reason that Saber Wolf is being considered here, Jim.
No, he's not actually, but um it was in his will. Just, just please, please reconsider Saber Wolf.
You got it, Bob.
You know, 2008 was the launch of the Marvel Cinematic Universe with Iron Man.
Can we go back to talking about Urkel?
Oh, yeah, then you're go- you at least know these references, right? I'm not talking about the damn Jeffersons and Good Times here. You know these references.
Well, first of all, I am almost as old as you and grew up watching those shows as well, but I was also reading comic books from that age as well. So yes.
I'm a, I'm a little bitty baby compared to you two. I don't know what a TV show is.
Oh, shit.
Uh, all right. So 2008, what launched the Marvel Cinematic Universe? And of course, you know, they they slowly built that up. So to the gen pop, to the general populace that, you know, makes up the theater's seat-filling popcorn-munching masses. It was 2012 when Marvel's The Avengers came to theaters that it really educated the mainstream on the magic of shared universes. Because yes, they existed. Yes, they could be found if you knew where to look. But it wasn't on the lips of everybody. People weren't excited about it unless you were a hardcore nerd of something. The MCU changed things fundamentally in pop culture where all of a sudden everybody kind of got in on the the thrill of it. The thing that's been driving DK Vines from the start, um, the thing that's kind of helped fuel comic culture and nerd culture for so many decades, it it went mainstream. And the MCU has therefore been the reference point when people think of shared universes. And you know, amusingly, despite being planned as and managed as a shared universe from the very beginning, unlike the DKU where it just sort of happened in 1997, Kevin Feige's MCU has more or less followed the DKU rules from the very start. Um, with Iron Man, Iron Man was the kickoff point and after that, every MCU movie had an appearance from a pre-existing MCU character that would have granted it MCU status if nobody was keeping track of this nonsense. So, you know, if just saying that it was MCU or making references to upstream characters or events wasn't enough. And actually, it was the recent movie, The Eternals, that was the first to break with this convention and had no pre-existing characters in it. Um, you can make the extreme case, which I feel like back in the day we would have um on DK Vine, that the character of Gilgamesh saying he bought, fought in the Battle of Tonsberg means he's one of the hundreds of warriors seen at the beginning of the movie Thor. You can make that case, right? Oh, Gilgamesh is there. He he's got his back to the camera. That's Gilgamesh. The uh, the the rules continue. Um, but you know, the MCU under Kevin Feige, who who is the architect of it, the 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 person in charge is so tightly managed and promoted as a shared universe that it's one of the rare cases where you could argue you don't need DK, DKU rules to keep it intact. And that will probably have to be the case this year if productions like Moon Knight or Ms. Marvel eschew from having established characters kick it off, right? So uh, and amusingly, you know, saying that the MCU has followed DKU rules, it even has cameo games now. Um, opening up the multiverse with things like Venom, Let There Be Carnage and um as far as Marvel TV goes, before Kevin Feige consolidated everything under Marvel Studios, the Marvel Television Division, which was a different studio from Marvel Studios, liked to promote all of its offerings as being part of the MCU. Even if only two, Agents of S.H.I.E.L.D. and Agent Carter, fit under DKU rules of pre-established characters. And you know, Kevin Feige, this has always interested me as I got into the MCU when they got away from the Joss Whedon quippy bullshit scripts and started getting into like actual comedies and actual like character-based uh plots. And I I really like the MCU, starting with like Wave Three on. I and before that, it's kind of hit or miss, but I appreciate the history. Um.
Do you not appreciate lines such as, well, that just happened?
Well, Dustin, write this down. This is, this is good stuff.
Yeah, I know. Uh, my money's on them.
I'm laughing already. Oh, my God.
I could write Marvel scripts all day.
Oh, my God. Get you to reboot Firefly or Dollhouse. Um. So this is, this is fascinating to me. You ate another shared universe as a DKU historian, sort of um archivist. Uh, cause Kevin Feige has always sort of skirted the Marvel TV stuff in a very diplomatic way and vaguely implied, um, at at least has vaguely implied recently, the Marvel TV stuff pre-Disney Plus, pre-consolidation into Marvel Studios, isn't canon? Uh, cause this was always a one-way street.
Yeah, I hate that shit.
I know, I know, but just listen. This was always a one-way street with Marvel TV championing their works as canon to the MCU and Marvel Studios usually ignoring it. Now you would get stuff uh like Edwin Jarvis from Agent Carter appearing for a quick cameo in Avengers Endgame, obviously. And uh, in some ways, this kind of fits into my spheres of canonicity concept that I've used to explain the cross-studio continuity of the DKU. For those who aren't aware, Nintendo would be the innermost sphere as they recognized Donkey Kong, his crossovers with Mario, and arguably now even Banjo Kazooie's shared lineage with DK. As I've always said, and you've always heard me say this, Banjo Kazooie is the Edwin Jarvis of Nintendo's sphere. Just, just obvious.
We can't stop you from saying it, honestly.
So Rare would be a sphere around that sphere, firmly recognizing their spinoffs as part of the DKU and and never really leaving that connection to Donkey Kong behind. You know, even things like Nuts and Bolts and Sea of Thieves have referenced Donkey Kong or the DKU in some way. Platonic would be the sphere outside of that, recognizing Ukulele as existing in the universe. Uh, much of their staff had a hand in help, helping shape in the 90s and aughts. And then the uh outermost sphere, the really wild sphere, would be stuff like Goldilocks and Little Bear and Tracky Train, you know, stuff that was done by former Rare staff. They tied into the DKU, but outside of the
Out into the Cooper Belt here.
Yeah, yeah. It's outside of the studio structure of the big three. So, you know, we at DK Vine, we recognize all the spheres of canonicity, but we would never expect like Rare to acknowledge Ukulele. Like Rare, you you contradicted Ukulele canon by bringing this up when we all know, like, that's not fair. That that's not fair to them. That's that's stupid. But however, this is all going somewhere. So this is the part of the conversation where I have very light spoilers for uh the most recent MCU productions, Hawkeye and Spider-Man: No Way Home. It's No Way Home, right? It's not, because it was Homecoming, Far From Home. And I hate that, by the way. That's such a stupid naming convention.
They all got home in them. That's how you know it's Spider-Man.
I'm gonna go on a quick rant that is totally unrelated to what I'm talking about. So Spider-Man: Homecoming was a really clever name because it took place at Homecoming for Peter Parker, but it was also Spider-Man's homecoming to the MCU, right? Very clever title. Uh, and then Far From Home was the second one. And it's like, he's far from home because he's in Europe. But he was just in outer space in the past Avengers movie and technically dead for five years. So like being in Europe isn't a big deal compared to that. They should have called it Spider-Man Field Trip because he's he he's on a field trip and he's also tripping balls because of Mysterio.
Right? I guess you could kind of spin haha, the the No Way or the the Far From Home as sort of like he's no longer in Sony's wheelhouse. Um, cause Sony had still kind of been trying to continue their own Spider-Man stuff on the side that uh Marvel sort of mercilessly cut into at that point.
Uh, I I I think the most recent movie, which I have not seen because I will not go to a movie theater uh in with present conditions. I'm gonna wait till, I'm gonna wait till it appear uh appears uh on streaming next month, but um or like rental streaming next month, but it should have been called Spider-Man Graduation. Then you have three little epochs of the high school career of Spider-Man. Anyway, that's my rant, rant over. Time, I can't remember their names now because it's Home Something and it's just, it's clunky. Um, so anyway, these, these are very light Hawkeye and Spider-Man, No Way Home spoilers, just referencing two characters that appear therein. I will not be getting into the plots. The MCU has seen fit to reintroduce some characters played by popular actors in the old Marvel Television shows. Two from the Netflix show Daredevil have cropped up in these recent Marvel Studios productions. Kingpin and Daredevil himself, Matt Murdock. So from what's been said uh and suggested by the actors in interviews and maybe Kevin uh Feige has spoken to it, I'm not really sure, but it seems like they're being vague on the history of these characters as they exist in the MCU. The implication being that they're not going to outright embrace the Marvel TV stuff as canon, but they're not going to go out of their way to contradict it either when reintroducing a character. So the backstory is there if fans want to embrace it. If they want to choose that it's canon, then they they can have that. Marvel Studios isn't going to kill themselves, though, trying to make that happen. In effect, Marvel Studios is laundering characters who are once not part of their understanding of the MCU as MCU characters. So from Kevin Feige's perspective, Hawkeye is Kingpin's first appearance, even if the fans can choose to view the entirety of Daredevil and the Defenders show as canon. And you know, that, like I said, that's been said in interviews. Uh, constantly they bring up that, oh, we're I'm so happy to be bringing this character to the MCU like it never happened before.
So physically squirming in my chair.
Okay, but that's, that's what's happening, Gibbon. But I'm saying like, they're not saying you can't view it as canon. Cause I, I like to view Agent Carter as canon to the MCU, even though I know they're not going to acknowledge it as such, aside from maybe, you know, little, little references here or there if somebody deems it fit. So I spent a good part of the holiday season watching Hawkeye and being surprised how much I enjoyed a show about Hawkeye and ruminating on all of this and thinking about how it applied to the Donkey Kong universe. This concept of laundering a character, taking a character that existed before, filtering it through the shared universe and then reintroducing it with some tweaks and saying, this is our character now.
We've claimed this character for ourselves.
It it's it's like laundering drug money, right? Like you, you, you earn it.
I wouldn't know anything about that. I'll defer to your expertise.
Again, I have a Patreon. I'm not laundering drug money. Or maybe I'm laundering with the Patreon. I really have only like two patrons and
That just tells me how few drugs you're selling.
I'm not very good at it.
When, when Breaking Maybe if you sell enough drugs, you can, you can get some wrapping paper or something.
When Breaking Bad is my guide to how to successfully sell drugs, I, it's not, it's not gonna work out well for me. Cause I, my only chemistry set is a Dr. Dreadful Food Lab from 1993.
Oh, man, there's a name I haven't heard in years.
Yeah.
So anyway, yeah, you you take the drug money, right, that you got from uh the illegal trade. You put it in a legitimate business and then the taxman doesn't know that it's, that it's dirty money. You've essentially re-fit that money for uh legal purposes. That money is now from your your, your deli or or whatever, you know?
Yeah, your NFT sale, totally with you.
I wasn't, look, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get the wrath of the crypto bros after me. Platonic already had to deal with enough of that.
They're not smart enough to listen to a podcast. Don't worry about it.
Just look, we like
Play buttons mystify them.
We all like cartoon monkeys here. Let's just smile and keep moving.
We can meet in the middle.
Oh, God.
So thinking about how this applied to the DKU, laundering a character and making it like your own, right? It it seems like a wonky concept, but we just saw the MCU do it. And I was thinking, you know, it's been done before with a DKU, hasn't it? Not just with Saberman. I'm talking about Donkey Kong. Because yes, Cranky Kong and arguably the modern Donkey Kong himself, if he's Donkey Kong Jr. as an adult, which, you know, I given I know you and I are in agreement with that, Dustin, I haven't really picked your brain about that recently.
I, about, about uh modern DK being DK Junior?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's the only way that makes sense.
Okay.
I just think it's the only way that doesn't leave any like gaps or questions unanswered.
That's, I mean
It's just the smoothest, cleanest way.
See, the the uh, the the people who know Donkey Kong history agree with this, but it it's a controversial opinion. It's controversial, controversial take. It's what's considered a hot take now that Donkey Kong Jr. is the modern Donkey Kong. And I don't know why, why that changed, how that changed over the years, but
That's why we're the ones in charge.
As I said,
We call the shot.
The rules find us. We do not define the rules, but uh this is what I'm getting at here. So Cranky and Mammy, the modern Donkey Kong, they're the very foundation of the Donkey Kong universe and the shared Rare universe. Before Donkey Kong Country, before Diddy Kong Racing, there wasn't really a shared Rare universe. You know, they they kind of existed in their own realms, right? Got, you know, Battletoads, you had RC Pro-Am, you had all of their games from back in the day, like the the Saberman games and that you might get references here or there, like, oh, Saber Wolf is a character in Killer Instinct. That's a reference to our game Saber Wolf on the uh Spectrum. You might get that.
Oh, like Saber Wolf.
But but it wasn't like
Karnak in Battletoads is a reference to our Pendragon games on Commodore 64.
So you would get that, but it wouldn't be like, and and this is Rash's old friend, Sir Arthur Pendragon, you know?
Yeah.
None of that. Yeah, that that really came about thanks to the Donkey Kong Country series and Diddy Kong Racing. And so, you know, DK Vine has always viewed Donkey Kong Country as ground zero, the very beginning. And because it is the beginning of the Rare Shared Universe, for all intents and purposes, that's where this all started. So So that's all well and good, but there are Donkey Kong games before Donkey Kong Country. Gibbon, you know something about this?
Yeah, just a tiny bit.
Yeah, a little bit. DKGurder.com. Check it out.
Ah, should update that.
Every time I plug it, you're like, oh.
One of these days.
I do update it. It's just, I need to overhaul the backend and you know how that goes.
Oh, I know something about overhauling my backend. I told you about my waxing.
Hey.
So uh,
Maybe someday I'll have a website.
I'm a Yankee Candle Dandy. All right. I don't even know what that means. I'm just saying. So uh, the very foundation of the DKU and the shared rear universe, as I said, was Donkong Country. But Donkey Kong was an older pre-existing series, a trilogy of games and some edutational titles. Edutational, is that the right term?
Edutainment?
Edutainment? Um,
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, they did the math and some other stuff. So Rare wasn't beholden to the arcade games, but they did treat it as the general backstory. And, and we at DK Vine have always treated this as kind of an exception to the DKU rules by virtue of not having any other examples to go off of and by necessity. Because if we went back and we embraced every version of the original 1981 Donkey Kong and Donkey Kong Jr. And Donkey Kong 3, well, then we might also have to embrace the totality of the Super Mario franchise.
There's, there's a simple way to avoid that, Heil, and that's to use Donkey Kong Country as a starting point and draw the line in the opposite direction as well.
I am a very linear thinker, Gibbon. I can't think in three dimensions. Maybe when I evolved
This was just two dimensions? You need to be able to turn around and not just face forward the whole time?
Man, math is hard.
When I move on to the next plane of existence and I'm a three dimensional spirit being in the conversation season 100, maybe we'll have this chat then.
Yeah, we're in the middle chapters of Flatland right now.
So, you know, we, we've embraced the backstory that, yeah, yeah, Stanley the Bug Man was a thing. It happened. But, you know, if, if we were to apply the DKU rules from 1981 onward, well, we'd be a Mario fan site. And our purpose here at DK Vine is to chronicle what's effectively the rare shared universe, which we define as the Donkey Kong universe, mostly because it's far, far more marketable as a term. Like you say, Donkey Kong universe, people are gonna come around.
I know who that is. That's a gorilla.
Yeah, you say rare shared universe. You're like, you mean rare where?
Yeah, it's like calling it the Cthulhu mythos, even though he's actually a very small and insignificant part of it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, and honestly, like the perfect strangers universe, it would probably be called the Steve Urkel universe because that's what most people know. They don't know Larry and Baalke, uh, you know? They, they know Urkel. Uh, so and this is actually something that, uh, you know, like this, this debate about when is something so far astray from what you actually like? That it's no longer part of it. Um, because this is, this is the problem we had with the Walla Uji rule and why the Walla Uji rule was such an important clarification, a rethinking of the way we view things, because otherwise we're gonna be, you know, having all these Toadette spinoffs. Captain Toad would be DKU, I think. Um, and, and then what are we doing here? What are we doing with our lives? This is, this is madness. And I remember in the early days of Mario Wiki, the early editors, you know, they messaged me and they were like, hey, we don't know what to do with Banjo and Conquer on Mario Wiki. Like, how do we treat this? Like, where do we draw the line? And so, I mean, it, it's something that DK
Ironically, the Mario Wiki is now run by a DK Vine community member.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, no, we're good friends with Mario Wiki. Yeah. Um, isn't it funny that Mario Wiki is the better Donkey Kong Wiki than Donkey Kong Wiki?
I was just thinking that the other day. I was
Funny and I'd cry, but I don't have enough tears sort of way.
I, I was trying to get pictures of all the animal buddies for something and boy, Mario Wiki helped out a lot more.
The, um, there, there are good people who try to do good work on Donkong Wiki. I don't want to disparage the whole lot of them. It's just they have a lot of, uh, there, there's no universal agreement going on there, which is the back of, I think they removed the Great April War page, though, so.
No, they, they did put a, it's still there, but they did put a giant like, hey, this is fan fiction disclaimer at the top finally.
Well,
There, there have been some issues with other wikis for like Conquer and Banjo and stuff. Um, that's why I just took over the Conquer Wiki. I'm the admin of that now.
Oh, congratulations.
Sometimes you have to take matters into your own hands.
Yeah. So I, when I, when I complain about Donkong Wiki, it's not everybody at Donkong Wiki. I, I sympathize with their plight. Um, but yeah, Mario Wiki is, is an excellent source anyway. Anyway, so, um, this is just something that everybody has to deal with, like where do we draw the line? And anyway, it's the, it's the DKU. It's the rare shared universe. So I've always said that, yeah, you know, the events of the arcade trilogy are still generally canon, even if we don't all necessarily embrace. And I said all Gibbon, all, you know?
Okay, okay.
Some of us, sure, but not all, um, every aspect as presented or posited at the time, like Donkong Senior being Mario's pet or whatever. Doesn't really fit in a Donkong Country canon as we understand it, but whatever. So
Okay, um, we'll leave that for another time.
Well, yeah, season 100 is gonna be a, a real firestorm of a season. So just, just, you know, we've drawn the line at the modern Donkey Kong as designed by Kev Bayless and Shigeru Miyamoto as being the DKU Donkey Kong, the shared rare universe Donkey Kong. Just like Kevin Feige's Kingpin and Daredevil, who will go on to appear throughout the MCU, aren't necessarily beholden to their Netflix origins, even if it might be acknowledged. So a pre-existing character laundered by a shared universe and remade in its image. It's how the DKU was formed. And yet we never thought of Saberman as being the same?
Oh, for shame.
I, 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 I was stupefied when this realization hit. Came down my chimney on Christmas Eve and I was like, Santa, what have you brought me?
Oh, no.
Well, Heil, I've brought you the ability to read arguments on the form that are 10 years old.
Just what he wanted.
And then, and then he starts taking off his, uh, his robe and I'm like, oh, this is porn. I know it when I see it.
I walked into the wrong room.
Oh, Santa, are you coming down my chimney tonight? I've got a sticky candy cane. I could go on a rant about how much I hate the lusty Santa Claus songs.
Oh, I'm right there with you.
Like the, the whole subgenre of Christmas songs where I want Santa
Should be outlawed.
I want Santa to, uh, come into my house so I can do him like
Yeah, Santa has a wife.
Uh, he's not married on Christmas Eve. Um, yeah, I don't know. That, that's, that's a rant for, you know, maybe sometime it's not February. So, so like Donkey Kong, this, this is interesting and this is something that I don't think I could have put together in a year 2000. Like Donkey Kong, Saberman also got a redesign for the DKU. His appearance in Banjo 2E that then carried over into Saber Wolf GBA and also in his cameo in Banjo Pilot was brand new. And, and I don't think we at DK Vine realized this or were capable of recognizing it back when Banjo 2E came out. Because obviously the ZX Spectrum, the, uh, the system, the console that these games appeared on, it wasn't known in the Americas. It, it wasn't something we were familiar with. This was a, a UK system. And so we weren't familiar with Saber Wolf or Underworld or Nightlore or Pentagram or any, any of this stuff. To us, this is just what Saberman looked like. He, he was
Unfortunately, we're familiar with Underworld now.
Well, yes, uh, that's, that's what I'm getting to here. So, you know, Saberman, he just looked like, um, this, this, this old, uh, British explorer with a big white bushy mustache. But aside from being this vague Englishman wearing a pith helmet, he wasn't established as looking like that until Banjo 2E, which I didn't put together or I didn't start putting together until Rare Replay until 2015. Because 2015, uh, you know, Rare Replay, the, uh, some, some of the Saberman games from back in the day were on Rare Replay. And in all of the art assets in Rare Replay or on the box art, I wondered at the time, what's weird that they only portray Saberman as his sprite, as a little sprite or a man cloaked in shadow, right? You never really see his face when he's artwork. Uh, cause we know what he looks like. He was in Banjo 2E. He Saber Wolf GBA. He's all over the place. He, he's a stout older man, similar in proportion to Mario with that, with that big mustache. And I, what I didn't realize is he wasn't always like that. And, and I did some digging and I found various advertisements for his four Spectrum games. And he was actually portrayed many different ways in those. It reminds me, Gibbon. I'm not leaving you out, Dustin, but this, this pertains to Gibbon. It reminds me of the inconsistency in how Donkey Kong and Jumpman slash Mario were portrayed in the early 1980s, you know, all over the map.
Yeah.
And
Yeah.
The Saberman and Banjo 2E onward is supposed to be an aged, far older version than he was in earlier games. Similar to Cranky Kong.
Although unlike Cranky Kong, Saberman has mellowed with age.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he, he's, he's less of an imperialistic dick, but
Yeah, mellow.
Yeah. Uh, it, it's, it's a complete redesign and rethink of the character. And it all kind of hit me thanks to fucking Kingpin and Hawkeye. It was like, wait a sec. It, it's like, you know that GIF? It's from one of those fucking CBS procedural shows of, I don't, I don't know who she is, but she's got all these equations appearing in front of her face.
Oh, yeah, I know the cure.
That's, that's what I looked like around the holidays this time, except it was like the source code for Saber Wolf GBA. And I was like, wait a second, what? Um, so all that being said, these long-winded tangents about laundering characters and, and making a pre-existing character native to your shared universe through this complicated process. It got me thinking and I was like, well, maybe it's time we have a new rule for the Donkong universe. An analogous to the Walla Uji rule back in the day. The Saberman rule that says a pre-existing character can become a DKU native character, but only if there's a significant tweak that holds for more than one game. Yeah. So it would have to be circumstantial and we would have to heavily vet it, right? Like this can't just be willy nilly. Let's just grab things left and right like, like, uh, Bubbles was in King of Swing. Now every Clue Clue Land game is DKU, baby.
Oh, yeah, all of them, all those Clue Clue Land games.
I would cry from joy if we actually had to have that discussion because it'd mean, yeah, there's more Clue Clue.
So there, there were a couple of times already in which this possibility has cropped up in the DKU. And I want to go down a list. If, if we're re-examining, changing our way of thinking, we need to be as intellectually honest with ourselves as possible and look at these cases. Star Fox Adventures may have once possibly been able to launder characters like Fox McLeod, Falco Lombardi, Slippy Toad, Peppy Hair, General Pepper and Rob 64. Had things been different, had that grain of sand gone a different direction, DK Vine, what if? Had Rare continued developing for Nintendo consoles and had they continued on with the Star Fox Adventures series? Instead, the weirdness of Dinosaur Planet merging with the Star Fox brand made the game natively DKU. It, you know, I know it's a, it's a, it's a tricky point for people. But, but only the character Tricky and new characters like Crystal were thought of as natively DKU. And as a result, we got a loose Dinosaur Planet trilogy that can, continued and sort of concluded. The story started in adventures, but the redesign of the original Team Star Fox, uh, didn't stick. Assault gave them a new look and they were never fully laundered, which is why Star Fox Zero, it wasn't DKU, for example. Um, and maybe that could have gone differently, had Rare stayed with Nintendo.
Ouch.
Yeah. Uh, I'm just gonna ignore Gibbon's little comment, a little slight remark. I'm trying to be positive. I'm trying not to be, uh, just throwing the, is it throwing tea? What, what, what do you do? What?
I don't know.
We are positive. We're positive that Star Fox Zero isn't DKU.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Well, not that positive. There's still Dinosaur Planet. There's still Star Fox Adventures references in Zero and, uh, Starlink, Metal for Atlas. Yeah, but no, no returning characters there.
Yeah, it, it could have gone, if, if Star Fox Adventures 2 happened and it didn't somehow have Crystal in it or Tricky or any characters from SFA minus the original Star Fox characters, then it'd be like, well, they, they were laundered. But that didn't happen. Battletoads 2020 is DKU because of an appearance by Sea of Thieves Captain Bones. Now, Battletoads 2020 radically remakes the Battletoads cast with a new art style and a sort of comic tone that everyone seems to hate other than us at DK Vine. So
What? People don't like that?
I love it.
What the fuck's wrong with them?
Uh, I, I would just look at this course of the online, bring it up, just, just, just shout it out in a crowded theater. Next time you go into a theater.
How's everyone in here feel about Battletoads?
Yeah, the, things will get ugly quick, but should Rash or, or Pimple or, or Zits or, or anybody from that game ever reappear in the style sans Captain Bones, uh, we, or a DKU character otherwise, we would then have to make the argument about whether or not the Battletoads cast was laundered via the Saberman rule. And, you know, they might just revert back to their, you know, traditional appearances the next time and then no, you know, then we don't have the discussion. But it's just something to keep in mind. Another ultimate play the game hero, uh, we brought it before, Sir Arthur Pendragon has appeared quite extensively in Sea of Thieves, first as a ghostman. And now as of a pirate's life, spoilers, he's returned to life. He's, he's in bodily form now. Now,
Pirate's Life is a whole other discussion, too.
Well, Pendragon isn't natively DKU, but again, were he to get his own spinoff from his appearances in Sea of Thieves, we would have to make the argument if Pendragon was laundered via the Saberman rule.
Now, what about, what about Jack Sparrow's redesign for Sea of Thieves?
Yes.
Because we're getting our first Jack Sparrow appearance post Sea of Thieves and he seems to have a similar design.
So yeah, Sea of, Sea of Thieves, uh, had of course the famous crossover with Pirates of the Caribbean. And Captain Jack Sparrow played a huge role in that. And what if his adventures from Sea of Thieves continued in a spinoff game? Well,
You know, a kart racer.
We might have to have that argument later because, you know, Captain Jack Sparrow from Alpha Pirates of the Caribbean. Um, that iteration of the character.
I can almost hear Jeff pounding his head against the wall.
It, it may have been laundered. He may have been laundered and he may be natively DKU, that aspect of the character. Holy shit, I live for this nonsense. This, this is, this is what I get
Yeah, this is great. I love it.
This is what I get out of bed for in the morning because these extremely obtuse, very specific narrow arguments. I love it. This is, this is why I'm glad there's not a Kevin Feige for the DKU. Why it is up to us because we can have these discussions. We have the best of both worlds. We don't have a complete ugly free for all like the Law and Order universe with Detective John Munch. But we, 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 um, we do have just enough hands-off, um, oversight from the creators that we really can shore things up and make these arguments and be like, well, this is, this is this, this is that, this is this. And you can't say otherwise, Greg Mills. You can't say otherwise, Chris Seaver, because look, we have the receipts right here.
Boom.
So I want to check in with the livestream chat to see if they're still with us because I feel like we have, uh, probably alienated people, but no, we haven't actually, uh, lost any of our listeners right now. Uh, hello to Ray Day Pinball, Violet Rain 3. Uh, and of course, uh, DK Vine staffer Cameron is also keeping an eye on things. So uh, yeah, it looks like nobody's arguing with us so far.
They said, yeah, Disney Kart Racers, DKU, bring it on.
Yeah, yeah. I feel like the, the kind of people who listen to the conversation live are probably the type of people who are, who are, uh, on our side of the bus with this sort of conversation.
Perhaps, perhaps. You know, maybe somebody really wanted to listen to this live because they're just so adamant that Saber Wolf GBA doesn't get in. They just hate it. They, like, Seymour Butts is crossing the line, like, I do not want-
We can't have that sully-ing the DKU.
Seymour Butts just makes things silly. It just brings down the integrity of the shared universe.
That's the line.
So, yeah, let, let, let me, uh, I guess start wrapping things up with, uh, final thoughts. Saber Wolf Game Boy Advance, and I'll let you two chime in too, because we need to make a ruling here. Uh, Saber Wolf GBA has been a game that I think nearly everyone who has played it has argued should be considered part of the Donkey Kong Universe. And, yeah, I agree, like, Saberman in Banjo 2E is one of the few examples of a character being brought into the shared universe with the explicit purpose of having future adventures. Saber Wolf GBA and the next Saberman Stampede would have both, you know, been continuations of that Banjo 2E appearance, or extensions of it at least. The timeline is something we have to debate entirely else if we, if we make a ruling here. But it's one of the purest examples, even more so than Diddy Kong Racing, as I said, because Diddy Kong Racing, gotta love it, gotta love what they were able to do with it, but it was such a last-minute decision based on two games that were already deep in development. And as we said, you know, Greg Males and Chris Seaver would attest to this, that was never part of the plan that they all exist in the same shared universe. But they pulled it off brilliantly, like, it, it was the, like, last-minute retcon of all retcons, but it worked beautifully. Like, yeah, Conqueror is Diddy's old friend. Yeah, yeah. Squawk showed up at Banjo's house, you know, it's-
I think, sure. I think it certainly helped matters that a lot of, that, that Banjo and Conquer share a lot of DNA with Donkey Kong, regardless of that. Like, there's a ton in Banjo Kazooie that you can point at and go, yeah, that's just stuff from Donkey Kong Country 1, 2, or 3, and it's, it's on the N64 now. And you can similarly point to stuff in Conquer's early outings and go, oh, yeah, that's a, that's a thing from Donkey Kong Country.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they, they all feel like they, they could totally fit with, together, so it, there, there is never any, like, sort of dishonesty there where it felt wrong at the time, and it was just like, okay, yeah, Banjo's a Donkey Kong character. Conquer is a Donkey Kong character. Sweet, moving on. Obviously, they're not, like, I'm not gonna say Conquer is a Donkey Kong character, but he was spun out of Donkey Kong, so.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah. Um, he's a Donkey Kong character from a certain point of view, just like you can make the case that Mario is a Donkey Kong character going back to the arcade games.
Yeah.
Yeah. And like, I, I'm not, like, I, I just want to be clear here, too. I, what DK Vine says, we're not telling people how to think. I never want people to get that impression. Like I said, like, when discussing the Marvel Studios Shared Universe, if you want to accept Marvel TV as canon, then, then go for it. Like, I, I'm just like, offering interpretations. And what DK Vine is offering is an interpretation of things. Gibbon doesn't agree with us on everything, but she goes with it. You know, it's, it's just, like, I, I think there are equally valid interpretations. Like, I don't get mad now when people say Donkey Kong is a Mario character. I'm like, that's a valid interpretation, sure. I think we just all need to kind of coexist, and DK Vine's wheelhouse uh, is the Rare Shared Universe, and that's how we view things. Uh, but we don't mean to besmirch or belittle the people who view Donkey Kong and Cast as Mario extensions. Far from it. So, anyway, of course, I guess I did belittle the people who think Banjo Kazooie does not exist in Donkey Kong's world, but, I mean, Diddy Kong Racing, like.
I, I don't belittle them. I just pity them a bit.
Yeah, I, I think it's, um, I, I think if you weren't there in 1997, if you weren't part of the ride from the beginning, I could see how you could come to that viewpoint, but let me just say, from somebody who was there, there's no way you could have lived the original history and not walked away with that impression, so.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Anyway, so, with our understanding of shared universes evolved, thanks to the biggest pop culture tastemaker of the 2010s, I've actually stumbled upon the logic of why Saber Wolf GBA should be DKU in a way that I never could before, even if the DKU was founded on the very notion that I'm arguing for today. So, as a result, I have been playing through Saber Wolf GBA to completion for the very first time, and I am loving it. Uh, there's so much, there is so much I want to talk about. But we have to come to a ruling, because I, I like, I guess we could do an honorable mentions episode for it if we decide it's not DKU, and, and then, you know, salvage the time spent, but I think we need to have a ruling right here and right now. Should Saber Wolf GBA be DKU? Should there be a Saberman rule of laundering characters when characters are reintroduced into the shared universe with the explicit purpose of existing in a shared universe? Should that be a new thing, ala Kevin Feige style?
Oh, absolutely. Just, yeah.
Yeah, it's fun.
I mean-
I mean, it's, it's fun, yes, but it also just makes sense, as, as you pointed out. It's kind of what the entire premise is predicated on with the reimagining of Donkey Kong into Donkey Kong Country. Um, so to, to allow that spirit to continue with other characters, just, it's, it's a no-brainer when you look at it, really.
That, that's always been my, uh, reasoning for why it should be DKU. Like, obviously, he was there in Banjo 2E and we, you, you know, we don't really consider those arcade DK games that came before DKC. Uh, so, you know, I feel like the early Saberman games kind of fall under that same umbrella.
Yeah, I mean, we've always been able to intellectually distinguish, well, that's the arcade Donkey Kong style. This is the Donkey Kong Country Donkey Kong style, and knowing what-
The tie helps.
Well, not just the, the, like, the tie, because Arcade Donkey Kong did have the tie concurrently, 1994 to 2003.
Well, that's a separate argument about reimaginings.
Yes. But, you know, I think not realizing the extent that Saberman was reimagined as a character, because not having that knowledge base, be, being American, being in the Americas, I never, like, played those games before Rare Replay. I never really had access to them in any legal sense. So, to kind of have that contextualation start percolating in 2015 and building to now, it's like, they did reimagine Saberman quite extensively for Banjo 2E, and then they just rolled with it from there. I mean, we've always said Saber Wolf GBA is part of the shared universe, even if we didn't count it as DKU, so it's always been this huge, like, what the fuck?
Yeah, it was, it was a Viva Piñata situation where it's like, yeah, this is obviously part of the same universe and happens, you know, right next door.
Yeah. We, we, but we never got the saving grace of, oh, yeah, that, that goldfish is actually roisted in disguise. We, we never got that kind of word of God, um, life raft thrown to us, life preserver, a little, little, little hoopy thing.
To be fair, did anybody ask?
No, I don't think we did. Um, I know, I know Rare staffers have quest, asked us, like, in recent years, why, why isn't Saber Wolf GBA DKU? And I says, well, because Saberman was a pre-existing character. Yeah, so.
It's kind of this whole crazy thing.
Yeah, when, when the creators of the game are going, wait, you don't count that? What? Why?
I don't know if I've ever actually had this discussion with anybody who worked on Saber Wolf GBA.
Okay, yeah, that's fair.
Maybe, maybe people who tested it, I don't know, but, um, yeah, it's just, it's just like, it's like, you could make the argument, wait, you know, like, does Killer Instinct take place in the shared universe? Does Jet Force Gemini? But Saber Wolf GBA explicitly takes place in the shared universe, and we didn't count it. And we, we didn't really have the understanding to have the mechanism to say, yeah, it's DKU, even though that was what the DKU was founded on. But now, understanding what we do about the character Saberman, how that design evolved and how Banjo 2E really was the beginning of that DKU Saberman look, then, yeah, Saberman is, Saberman, that character, that version of that character, and therefore Saber Wolf GBA, they're DKU. So, yeah, I gotta, gotta update some things on the site. Um, and on an upcoming episode of the conversation, I will give my thoughts on the journey playing Saber Wolf GBA to completion for the very first time. So, isn't this fun? Like, we have a new DKU game to discuss.
Wait, wait, Heil.
Yeah?
Wouldn't that mean the mobile version of Saber Wolf is also DKU?
Oh, fuck.